Call order the Cuyahoga County Committee of the Whole for Thursday, April 23rd, 2015. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Calling the roll Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hairston. Mr. Hairston is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon is absent. Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Germana?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher is absent today. Mr. Schron? Mr. Schron is absent at the moment. Ms. Conwell? Ms. Conwell is absent today. Mr. Jones?
Here.
And Mr. Brady?
Here.
You have a call.
We could, we, if I can have a motion to give Michael Gallagher to excuse his absence, he's having a medical-related.
So moved.
So moved. In seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, the absence is granted. There are quite a few people who don't happen to be here and I'm not quite sure who to excuse and who not to excuse. They don't need to be excused because it's Committee of the Whole, but it is good to acknowledge the fact that Mike is having some back work done. Any public comment related to the agenda?
I have not received any requests, Mr. Chair.
All right. Item number four. I'm referred to the committee. Could you read it into the record, please?
Resolution number 2015-0057, a resolution confirming the county executive's appointment of W. Christopher Murray II upon his taking the oath of office as Treasurer of Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
I am prepared to make a motion to refer this to the council for passage next Tuesday. Are there any questions or concerns by the Committee of the Whole at this point about moving this recommendation forward?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, this will be a second reading suspension, correct?
Yes, second reading suspension.
Okay, very well, thank you. No further comment.
Okay. All right. First and seconded, no more discussion. All those in favor, I think we need a roll call on this. No, don't need a roll call on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Nice have it. The item is referred to under suspension. Councilman Greenspan on this issue, I know that you had asked to have some lingering questions in writing. I assume that you must have gotten those or...
We did, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Items referred to the committee, confirmation hearings. All right. This is getting familiar.
Mr. President, if I may interject...
Do you need to read that into the record first?
Yes, sir, I can do that. I'd just like to acknowledge that Mr. Hairston is present at the meeting. And Mr. Hairston, there's been a first and second to move the item, resolution 2015-0057, to the full council for recommendation for passage for second reading suspension of the rules. Would you like to vote under that, for that?
Yes.
Thank you. Reading the resolution into the record, resolution number 2015-0060, a resolution confirming the county executive's appointment of Michael W. Dever upon his taking the oath of office as Cuyahoga County Director of Public Works and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right. Welcome to the confirmation hearings at which the council will consider the appointments of Michael Dever as Director of Public Works and Robert Triasi as Director of Law. For a little background, the Department of Public Works was originally established in 2011, merging the responsibilities of the county engineer and the sanitary engineer. The Director of Public Works must be a certified professional engineer and a registered surveyor or employ deputies who together possess these qualifications. It's our understanding that Mr. Dever is currently serving as interim director and that will be made permanent upon council's confirmation. The hearing process will proceed as we have in the past. The nominees will be offered an opportunity to address their qualifications. The council members will be offered the opportunity to ask questions. Once all the questions have been asked, we will entertain a motion to recommend that the council approve or reject the nomination. If we're not ready to act on the motion today, we will defer making a recommendation. Assuming a motion to recommend approval or rejection has been made, council will vote on that recommendation at its next regular meeting. Thank you, and Mr. Dever, please come forward. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of council. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening. I have a prepared statement at first, if that's okay, if I could go through that, and then I'm more than willing to answer any and all questions that are posed before me. I am honored and humbled to be before you today as the nominee for the Director of Public Works. I am deeply grateful for the trust and keenly aware of the responsibilities that the executive has placed in me to serve our county and our citizens. If confirmed, I will accept the duties of the office with gratitude, humility, and the strong determination to represent Cuyahoga County as energetically and faithfully as I can. Although each of you has my resume before you, I'd briefly like to go over my experience and qualifications. I'm a lifelong resident of Lakewood, Ohio, graduating from Lakewood High School and then Slippery Rock University with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. Upon returning from undergraduate college, I went back to work for my family's business, which is primarily a small contracting and utility restoration. Here, I learned many aspects of a small business, from estimating and bidding to constructing and invoicing, to filling the appropriate tax and worker compensation reports. Since most of my family's work was seasonal, during the winter months, I was fortunate to find work through the local trade union, many times as a labor foreman or a general labor foreman. This is where I learned many aspects of large industrial and vertical projects. Some of those projects included the Garrett Morgan Water Treatment Facility Rehab, the Brook Park Engine Plant, the county's own JL-2 project, South Park Mall, Anslar Middle Steel Mill, and the new federal courthouse. At the same time, I had enrolled at Cleveland State University and started my graduate studies. In 2001, I accepted a position with the county engineer's office as the construction administrator. This department was responsible for the bidding and awarding and administering of road and bridge projects. Staffing included engineers, project supervisors, inspection staffs that would handle day-to-day activities on those projects. Typically, though, that department would oversee anywhere from 12 to 25 projects on any given year with an annual construction budget of $30 million. Funding for these projects would come from various sources such as the county's road and bridge fund, state and federal funds. During that time, I attended night school and completed my graduate work, earning my master's in public works and public administration in 2004. In 2008, I was recommended by the county engineer and appointed by the county commission as the deputy to the sanitary engineer. At that time, the sanitary sewer division had maintenance agreements with 29 communities to provide various sanitary sewer services. This department was poised for growth and the ability to provide shared and collaborative services in the region. By early 2009, we had expanded our services by 29 percent with the single addition of the city of Parma as one of those agreed communities. The division continued to work on improving the delivery of services and expanding our availability to provide those services. I led a team of coworkers promoting regional sewer services to the municipalities, which resulted in additional communities joining and expanding our services and many others. Specifically, we were providing more storm sewer services to those communities. In 2011, the county department, as you had mentioned, had changed, and with consolidation, I accepted a position with the new restructured Department of Public Works. As you know, the department is primarily a consolidation of the former county engineer's office, the sanitary engineer's office, and the former central services. This new department was then divided into three divisions. First, the planning and finance division. The second division was the department, within the department is the design and construction division. This group takes the projects that have been planned out and prepares the detailed design and what can be done in-house or with the assistance of consultants. The third division was the public works is the maintenance section. This is which the department I currently oversee, or division, I'm sorry. Our responsibilities include maintaining the county facilities, the sewers, bridges, the county fleet, and the airport operations. On a local level, I'm proud to say that I previously served my home city for seven years as an at-large council member. Two years serving as council president and also chaired the public works and rules and ordinances committees. During that time, I worked closely with the city's administration to solve budgetary challenges, to make sure that our core community services continued. In addition, the critical capital projects were funded at the same time assuring that the city's reserves were intact. Currently, I'm serving as one of the city's civil service commissioners, which reviews the hiring and promotional opportunities within the municipal workforce. Critical infrastructure is the backbone of the county's national and economic security. In addition to the county buildings and roads where thousands of residents of Cuyahoga travel, work, and visit each day, the county, through its Department of Public Works, touches everything from puppies to violent felons, from our courthouse to their sewers. It includes airports, energy facilities, mail delivery, communication networks, bridges, roadways, and a fleet of vehicles. And it runs 24/7, 365 days a year. I have a privilege of working with skilled tradesmen, engineers, custodians, heavy machine operators, CPAs, administrative folks, and unfortunately, some lawyers, too. No pun. I'm sorry, Bob. Public Works is here, day in and day out, to support you and our fellow county employees to do the important, often unsung, work of the county to provide the structure and operations for everyday importance and use. Folks rely on us without even knowing they do. That's our job. But I assure you that I will frequently seek your consultation and conversation with members of this committee and the county council as a whole, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council, for your time and consideration today of my appointment, and I know there's a lot more territory to cover, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dever. I'm assuming you're not a lawyer, right?
No, I'm not.
I don't believe we have any on the panel today. You're also not a professional engineer or a registered surveyor, is that correct?
That's correct.
And as you know, the charter requires the director to designate deputies that do hold these qualifications. What is your intention in that regard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, obviously, the public works department is a very large and diverse, as I had just mentioned. On staff, we currently have over 30 engineers, four surveyors, a CPA, many administrative folks, two attorneys work within our department also. The position of public works director, in my opinion, is more of an administrative position. There's a lot of things going on with personnel. Obviously, road and bridge work is being done on a daily basis there also, but I think we have the expertise in-house. David Marquardt, our county engineer, who is deputy director also, he's available to assist me on any of those issues. I've been working around many infrastructure projects for a long time now. I have a firm grasp and understanding of those projects, and I think the staff that works with us in the department, I think we have a long, a deep bench, should I say, qualified and talented individuals to help assist me with those efforts.
All right. Mr. Dever, questions by the committee. Mr. Jones, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Dever, on arriving to this point in the process. I've served as the chairman of public works for the last, I'll say, three years or so, and had opportunity to work with you, even as I worked with the previous director. We certainly, in our efforts, look to, you know, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna start with my main question, which is the Juvenile Justice Center. Give me a stat, let me start there. What is the status of our Juvenile Justice Center? The old Juvenile Justice Center?
That's correct. Well, actually, the old Juvenile Justice Center was part of the overall consolidation study of properties a few years ago. That parcel has not been sold as of yet, but there is an agreement in place, and there is a group that is assessing that property with assistance from the Campus District Development Corporation to convert that facility into at-risk youth boarding school. I believe that they've used this model in other areas throughout the country, primarily, I think their hub is in Washington, DC. So they are evaluating that facility as we speak. I had met with Bobby Rictold from the Development Corporation just this past Saturday at 5:00 because they're, just to walk through the facility with her. It was an unusual time, but I was anxious to get in, back into the building. It was on the weekend, but we wanted to get in there and just walk it together and get a sense of how the building is. There's been an issue with a broken pipe in that facility just recently, and it's caused some damage. But I think the intent of the boys' home, or the boarding school that's planning on going in there is to completely gut the facility and then convert it into boarding and a school for those at-risk youth. I believe we have a window of roughly 18 months from now that a decision needs to be made, and, but right now, I believe that that is moving forward, and I hope so, that it does. It's a great and historic building, and I think they're anxious to get some historic tax credits on that facility also.
Right. Part of that, the demolition that's going to take place is to the jail aspect, jail part. That building is in my district. It's very symbolic that they are destroying the jail and converting it to a boarding school that serves at-risk youth. So similar children in my district who might have been in the prison facilities now have an opportunity to get an education and potentially go into college. So that's a great project. So that 18-month window, as you mentioned, is one where we're maintaining the liability on that building until the, all of the parts, the historic tax credits and the other aspects of this project are pulled together. So...
Yes, that's correct. And actually, I believe that they are going to be successful, and you are right that they are, the intent is to take down that old detention facility, and based on everything I've seen so far, I think they're going to accomplish their goal.
Right. That project will resonate greatly, strongly in my district. And I'll pass my other questions on to the second round.
Councilman Brown.
Congratulations on getting the appointment. I wanted to know, where do you stand on the lease agreements in the CDC? So I've been faced with some concerns from the community regarding leases that have not been extended for more than a year, and it places a challenge on them to get financing to improve the community, so I'd like to know your thoughts on that.
As for the lease arrangement, with the new executive coming in, our charge is to look at everything, our facilities. When the consolidation project took place a number of years ago, things have changed since then, and there may be some opportunities for future consolidation. And I know that some of the leases out in the suburbs and in the neighborhoods, I think in particular Mount Pleasant and, if I'm not mistaken, Brooklyn, we have some additional space available in the Virgil Brown Building, and I'm working with Dave Merriman over there to try and identify it, so that maybe some of these leases that we have, we may be able to shrink them or consolidate a few of them, since we do have ample space within our one facility, I think. So what I'd like to say is we're evaluating everything, and rather than making a long-term commitment in each of these buildings, we want to make sure we have some flexibility if it turns out that, I think it'll be with consultation also with council, that we bring some of those services back down to that facility downtown. I well understand that the intent of reaching out to those neighborhoods is so that you have those services close by, so, because many people don't have vehicles or transportation issues. So I think that's all going to be within the discussion point, but myself and the council, or I'm sorry, Dave Merriman, and I'm sure a few others will be involved in those discussions, but I'm here to provide opportunities, if anything, in the current buildings we have, and so that's what I'll try and do.
Thank you.
Mr. Dever, on the lease for the Mount Pleasant facility, could you, we have a focused interest on that, we'd like to get as much information as we can, so that too much time doesn't go by. We need to know.
Yes, actually, I'll get as much information as I can in the short timeframe, maybe I can get it back to you tomorrow, and specifically in regards to that lease, but I think right now, there is a proposal to at least a one-year extension on that current facility, if I'm not mistaken, and once again, I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me.
Yes, if you could get it to me and to Councilwoman Brown as well.
Right, appreciate it.
Okay, sure.
Councilman Miller.
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Dever first, congratulations on your recommendation for appointment, and it's another example, I think it's very beneficial when people can move through the system from the inside and be eventually appointed to a top-level position. So I think that sends a good message when that can happen. I would like if you could update us on the current status of the Halle Warehouse, particularly as concerns to how much money do we currently believe will be necessary to make the necessary repairs for that facility, to make it fully functional as a storage and archives facility? And secondly, as to what you currently see as the timetable for bringing that to completion?
As with all of our larger projects going on right now, we're in the process of reevaluating each and every one of those, in particular, the Halle facility, we are. It seems the original budget for the facility was at a specific level, and it seems like there's been additions to that, or as some people may call a scope creep.
Scope creep.
And what we're trying to do now is to look at it and try and bring it back to that original budget that it was at. So that means some significant cuts, some bad news for some departments, but we are looking at it. I don't have a particular number for you right now. My intent and the executive has been quite clear with me also, that he's looking to bring these projects back into their original budgets, so we're continuing to look at that.
My second question is as to what are your plans for assessing the capital needs of the Justice Center? And specifically, what would you envision the process for doing that going forward? And what would be your timeline for coming up with a general plan of attack for us going forward as to what we think we need to do with that facility and what we think it's going to cost?
As you know, we, council gave authority for us to initiate an assessment of that facility back in 2000, I believe it was 12, early 13. We did initiate that assessment. We came back with some results in early 14, with some multiple options provided, from rebuilding, from basically repairing what's in place to complete rebuild of the facility. The Justice Center, as you know, has a number of people involved with that facility, both the city and the county, the municipal courts, and the common pleas court. We have that assessment in hand. The, I've been having some discussions with the county executive in regards to it. I don't believe that there's a recommendation as of yet on what course of action to take. I think there's going to be some further discussions with all of the stakeholders in regards to that facility. The Cleveland Police Building is one piece of that also. So we need to actually bring back together all of the key stakeholders. I think it's been identified as one of the high priorities. It's 40-plus years old now. Many of its systems are antiquated and need to be repaired. It was built for a specific purpose, and I think that purpose has changed somewhat, or some of the departments within it have changed and expanded and have programmed into, or morphed into different responsibilities. The, so I believe that we're going to be coming back together, having a larger discussion on it. I don't think it's something we're going to answer very quickly, though. The short-term cost, there's some emergency items that need to be addressed, and we're moving forward with that. There are primarily some security-related items. There is a water infiltration issue right now in the building. Whatever decision we're going to, that's going to be made over the course, I believe, the next year here, it's still going to take time then to develop plans and to ultimately implement those plans. I foresee this as a multi-year project, any way you look at it, and so I'm going to have to come back to you with that, Councilman. I have a feeling that there's going to be presentations before this council in the near future to kind of talk about where it is and where we need to go, and it's just not going to be the administration making the determination on this, obviously. There's many people that need to be at the table.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up. On the Halle Warehouse, my, the second part of my question was the estimated timeline to completion. Can you give me a response on that?
Yeah, in regards to the Halle Warehouse, we've already started some of the work there. There's windows being replaced, some energy efficiency starting to be seen in the building. I'm fairly certain that we are going to initiate our first lease payments for that facility. I think it's in June this year. We have, ideally, I don't have a hard timeframe to have it completed. There's multiple build-outs that are going to need to take place, in particular for the county archives to move into the facility, and as I said, we're reevaluating, doing some value engineering to try and get within the proper budget or the approved initial budget, and I'm working towards that effort. I've got, unfortunately, the staff upstairs, which are running ragged right now because of these requests I'm making of them, but there's enthusiasm up there that we're staying true to the project. We want to get it accomplished. We know we're going to be bringing those other agencies, the Board of Elections, I've met with them, Pat McDonald and Sean Webster just recently, to talk about their space. I'm planning on meeting with the archivist shortly here also. I'm planning on meeting with the archivist shortly here also. So we're moving it forward, Councilman. I'm sorry, it's not a hard date or time that I can provide you, but I'm eager to get it. There's work going on there right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman German and then Councilman Greenspan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know the requirements under Public Works is to have an engineer and surveyor, and under the old system of engineer, the engineer had to hold both degrees, and then, of course, that, how do you want to say, brought down the number of qualified candidates. But I'm sure that under this situation with the Department of Public Works, it's just more than just engineering and surveying. It's a broad category. And it seems your biggest credential supporting that is Master of Public Administration. I don't know exactly what studies and what curriculum is involved in getting a Master of Public Administration. Can you just enlighten me on that aspect?
Sure. When I initiated my graduate studies, actually, I was focused more on urban planning. And one of my first instructors was Norm Cromholt. I think everybody knows Norm, or should I say Professor Cromholt. And I'm sure as many of you know that at Cleveland State University, it's a premier program that they have down there at the college. The administrative studies, we looked at all type of municipal, state. It's somewhat difficult to kind of explain everything that you went over. We did a broad brush of studies that involved, you know, what goes on at the federal level, case studies, the theory behind why you need a municipal budget and why you need to stick with it. As it was tied into part of land use planning also, to some extent, the intricacies of working with both the administrative or the political level, and then what are the needs for certain constituents? It was rewarding. It's been a while since I've been in school, but I hope that answers part of your question.
Thank you. I think, you know, I've been on record many times talking about the value of the sanitary engineer and what it's done to different municipalities. And certainly, you know, I realize that with my prior affiliation with the City of Parma. And of course, I got to know you through that, and I can still say that I'm one of the biggest supporters of that collaboration event, that the county is working with so many different cities. So I want to congratulate you on your past work on that. So I think it's important that the Director of Public Works has got the management experience to carry it off. So I wish you well with your confirmation.
Well, thank you. I would say that, you know, the sanitary division is what, it's a truly regional effort going on down at sanitary there. As many of you know, that we represent now roughly 35 of the 59 communities in Cuyahoga County, and it's true regional collaboration going on at that facility. And once the City of Parma came on board back in 2008, that was a significant increase. And I believe it really put us on the map. After that, there was a number of other cities that started looking at us seriously. We increased efficiency in the facility. We expanded our availability of hours. And in fact, in just our most recent collective bargaining agreement, now we have two shifts running it down at that facility. At one time, it wasn't really treated as a utility, and it really is a utility. If the wastewater system is not operational, you've got problems. And so we've done some good work down there. There's a lot of good people behind me that I want to make sure that I point out, that there's very skilled people within this department. Those are the unsung heroes. They really make things happen here, and I'm fortunate to have them with me. Thank you.
Councilman Greenspan.
Great, thank you. Let's go back to the Hallie Warehouse. So you made some interesting comments there. The, so are you saying that, so you call it scope creep? Is that correct?
I think that's a term that's typically used on a project that tends to continue to grow a bit at a time.
So what's growing?
Well, actually, I don't think anything is growing. I think there was just some fine-tuned, maybe there were some, I'm still getting my arms around the project itself. But when I came in, the budget for the project was initially, I believe it was $5 million plus 2.4 that was coming in from the original, the tenant improvements from the vendor. And now it had grown up to, I think it's close to a $10 million project. So we're reevaluating some of those improvements from the finishing of floors. If it's a warehouse, do we really need to finish floors and make them polished floors when it's really you've got boxes on shelves in certain sections of it? We do know that there are people going to be in that facility, so we need to make sure it's safe and comfortable so that they can work in there. The public will be going through there also.
Well, let me ask you, who, I may ask a series of questions about this one topic, so unless the chair cuts me off, I'll be respectful, but who did the initial assessment to come up with the $5 million budget?
I believe the initial assessment was-
Or 7.4, let's include the TI in there.
Right. I think the initial assessment was done by a consultant.
And who was that? Do you recall who that consultant was?
No, I don't. We have a few consultants working, obviously, the department, I think there's roughly, there's roughly 15 to 18 different consultants working for the county right now, but I can't recall, I'm sorry.
And you mentioned that there were some departments that are being spoken to about cuts to their needs, correct? So would you?
Well, cuts meaning some items that I think, if we can make the place safe and habitable for them, that's what we're trying to do. The print shop was scheduled to go into the facility, and the print shop currently is located at 1642 Lakeside. To move those presses and pick up all of that equipment didn't make a whole lot of sense. The print shop has a delivery bay right there, and so we've decided to pull back on that also. So there's some savings, substantial savings, by not putting the print shop within that facility. But we still have 1642, where it's our primary trade shop also.
Yeah, see, here's where I'm going with this. When we were evaluating to re-enter a lease with the landlord, you know, our decision was based on certain facts that were presented by the administration, insofar as costs and services and consolidation. And so what I'm hearing now is there was an under-managed process insofar as determining what the needs were going to be to bring the building to a functional state. Now we're hearing, in addition to that, resources that we were told were going to be consolidated are not. And, you know, I wasn't a big fan of the Hallie Warehouse, would have preferred we built the facility, and I always shut down that the costs were going to be prohibitive for us to do that. I'm not so sure that was necessarily the case now. I'm looking to be proved right, but what I am looking for and what I'm tired of is the, and I'll tell you where I'm going with this, is the previous administration basically baiting, switching us into decisions. Got the same thing with CCOMs. Now, this is 25% minimally over budget right now, and we're not consolidating. So my message is, if confirmed, don't give us the runaround. Give us the facts as you know them. This vendor that was used, just like the first vendor for CCOMs, we're calling them in for a hearing to find out why they missed so badly. Because if they missed intentionally to get the contract, it's a problem. And so I'm not putting up with it anymore. This bothers me. We know we're under tight financial constraints, as we are, as we knew we were a year ago, as we are now, and that we're going to come up with more money in order to make this facility work. I'm just kind of giving you a warning shot across the bow, don't do this to us, as was done to us previously, as we're slowly peeling the onion and finding more stink.
One point is the consolidation of buildings, like the Archives is still coming. So the Archives facility will ultimately be relocated in there, and then I believe that that building is being sold to, I think it's Welcome House is the name of the group. So that is going to be happening. The scanning operation, the fiscal scanning operation is going to be coming into that facility too, and they moved out of the old auto title facility. So as for the print shop not going in there, our intent was always to hold on to that building, to 1642 Lakeside. So I just wanted to point that out, okay?
Yeah, I've got some other questions on different topics, but I'll defer and come back.
I'll go to Brown in a second. I just wanted to reemphasize, this is just, council's just got a bit of a tick over the Hallie Warehouse building, you know, because we spent a lot of time on it over the last several years and went around and around about a lot of different issues. So almost everything you say, for those of us who've been here, you know, the last four years is, you know, painfully familiar. And that's why I think we're still somewhat mystified about the difference in the costs since there was so much discussion about it. And also, the former Director of the Department was a very engaging, delightful person, who was aggressive and, you know, and sometimes I felt as if, while she was extremely cordial, that I wasn't always getting all the information that I really wanted to get. And there seemed to be a sort of a state secret sort of atmosphere about some of the bigger projects. And I'm sure that didn't just come from, you know, the Director on her own, but just that, you know, we're looking forward to a more open relationship, because it's over time that these kinds of relationships get going in a direction they shouldn't go in, and people over a period of experiences start to mistrust the information that they're getting, or feel like what they're saying is not being heard, or at least not being, you know, seriously listened to. But, you know, that said, you know, like to just move forward rather than we could dwell on the last four years.
Yeah, Mr. President, I look at it as a collaborative and a partnership here. As you know, I did serve on a council in the City of Lakewood, and I had a very good relationship with the numerous mayors that were there at the time. And I thought, it takes some work, but it turned out to be positive, so I've been on that side of the aisle.
Yeah, I consider that to be, you know, an attribute you have, that the last Director didn't have, that very few people have, actually, that is helpful in understanding us and kind of our roles as a council. Appreciate that. Councilman Brown.
Fortunately for you, I don't have as much angst, so I haven't had that experience with a previous administration, so my question might be a little bit more of a softball for you. Having the municipality serving on city council, what additional services do you think Public Works could expand into municipalities and subdivisions to increase regionalism efforts?
Well, I think the work that we're doing right now from the sanitary services, which I will note that we don't really have a presence on the west shore of the county, because, and I'm not 100% sure why that is. But the sanitary program is very successful, and we're continuously having people look at us, because the price of the equipment is just astronomical. I think you saw just recently in one of the Board of Control meetings, that we purchased a jetpack for $415,000. Many communities just can't purchase that equipment. The reason why we can do it is because it's constantly working, and now that we've got two shifts going, I'm maximizing that equipment by getting roughly 16 hours a day of that piece of equipment. Obviously, it wears much sooner, but we are, we're out there every given day doing that work. So that is one of those core services that I would continue and I'll be working with. Obviously, Eddie has gotten up to speed on it very much so also, and it's one of those services that we got to keep touting and encouraging the communities to look at. Our roadway programs are successful, the program that was developed that included, just recently, the legislation was passed about the 100% item. I know it was very successful, but it did cause a little bit of a drain on some of our funding, and I would suggest we look at it. I encourage the program to continue, but I would, we need to make sure that we have funding available for some, so we can tackle some of the larger federal aid jobs where we get 80 cents on the dollar also. So besides that, I believe, you know, we're trying to do some, the Printing Department is working with some of the municipalities, and if I'm not mistaken, HR has reached out too, but that's not Public Works.
Then that leads me to my next question. As the Director of Public Works, you'll be overseeing local road bridges and sewer projects. What is your experience of working with regional, state, and federal partners to secure project funding?
Well, I've had direct experience working with all the communities in Cuyahoga County, and I expect to use that experience, in particular with Nwaka. I think we need a strong presence at that board, and I'm going to very much encourage that with my staff, that they are participants there. We're there for every meeting, for decisions that are being made. That's where all the federal funding comes through for this area, and we need to make sure we have a strong presence there and that we're representing everybody in the county. So that's one of the things that I'm, it's important to me.
Just a point, you know, we have the most votes on the Nwaka Board between Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. And I think Cleveland just has, I think, one more vote than we has on the board. Nate Kelly was there, Bonnie Tewin, just speaking as a newly-appointed member there. So we have the votes, we just have to show up and get it done.
Okay. Are you good? All right. We're going to go back to Councilman Greenspan, then Councilman Miller's indicated he has a follow-up question. This is an important position. We would like to try to do two confirmation hearings this afternoon, and so it would be my hope that we could begin the second one on or about 3:00. But of course, if Councilmen have questions of Mr. Dever, we will certainly accommodate them. Councilman Greenspan.
I think you strategically placed that comment right in front of my open mic.
Did that work out all right?
I sometimes can't say my name in seven minutes. I'll consolidate some questions. There are two on here, and there's a third that I think is important, but with the bridge, Public Square, and what's not on here is the potential of the Cleveland Jail. But with the Bridge Public Square and what's not on here is the potential of the Cleveland Jail project taking place. All of those require some input, if not majority input, from Public Works. The challenge, I think, with those, and maybe because of your experience with being, serving as a council member under, saying this side of the equation, you know, those three projects in particular, we are waiting for the city of Cleveland to provide us with necessary information, documents and/or funding in order to move forward. What's been your role in any or all of those projects?
More so than any other is probably the Bridge project, the pedestrian bridge project. The Public Square project is being administered by the city. And then the final project that you mentioned was?
The Cleveland Jail.
The Cleveland Jail, that's right. There's a larger discussion going on about central booking in the early disposition court that somehow incorporates part of that Cleveland Jail equation. Right now, I know that there was a proposal brought forward for the county to take over the, I believe it's 60 or 120 beds in the city of Cleveland's building. I'm not sure where that is right now. I remember when there was the initial assessment of what that cost would be to get that facility up to grade. I would suggest, I believe unfortunately, the former Public Safety Director, I think, was involved very much in that, so he has more answers to it. So Sheriff, former Sheriff Bova may have a better understanding. I'm kind of on a hold pattern right now in regards to that.
But have you been engaged insofar as with that project in particular? Been engaged doing the assessment of the facility to give us an accurate budget as to what it would take for us to be able to
Right.
retro, modify, upgrade the facility
Right.
so that we can take over that operation?
Right. I have been involved in that. We did hire a consultant to do a review of the facility and what can be done to bring it up to code if we were to take it over. That assessment, I think, is a few years old now because that project's, or that discussion's been ongoing. So I think it's up on the shelf waiting to be activated again.
Okay. Okay, and one last question. It has to do with capital budgets. So we lack some capital budgeting development in the county. What are your thoughts on that? What's your experience in preparing long-term strategic capital planning?
Well, that's what we need to do. In particular, for all of our facilities, we do have a pretty clear capital improvement plan for all roads and bridges. And that was part of the mandate of the former county engineer's office is that you needed to develop that five, 10-year plan. And that's how you would program a project out. That's where we would capitalize on any, the federal dollars too. Because we plan these things out. And typically on any large road or construction project like that, it's five, maybe seven years out before you move forward. Actually, I remember one project when I was in the engineer's office, the Crocker Stearns extension was on the books for, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was like 27 years until the funding could be secured for it. But I mean, that's an exaggeration. That was the last piece to connect in the county. So we wouldn't be doing another project like that anytime soon.
Well, no, I'm sorry, let me direct my question more specifically to the 30-plus buildings the county owns.
That's right.
Not the road and bridge, I get, we've been doing that.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about our infrastructure, our owned or leased assets.
Right. Well, what we're, we need to do an honest assessment of it. And that assessment could entail two different ways of tackling it. You can either do it through a consultant, which has always cost money, or we do have some skilled individuals within our offices as it is now, the people that take care of these buildings. And they can give you a fairly good estimate on what it would take to do improvements and plan those out over some time from any system improvements that you need to do in the building. Since the consolidation, we've shrunk it down now. And I believe we're at 23, 24 pride buildings now. The main buildings, the Justice Center, we've done the assessments. We've got a picture of what needs to be done there. Now we needed to figure out, you know, how we're gonna tackle that and, or what the opportunities are. Virgil Brown, the Hunter Building, the Board of Elections, the new Juvenile Justice Center. It's five years old, we're about to go through recommissioning on that. So planning out those improvements, we need to be honest with ourselves and have a five-year capital budget. And we're developing that now. And we're gonna be presenting that actually to the executive in the near term here to give him an overview of what realistically type of money we would need to maintain these buildings and keep them in operation. There's still some opportunities for some consolidation too that I'd like to revisit sometime in the near future also. I think there's been savings in the consolidation. But as for the capital budget, we're working our way through that. And I would say we'll have something before the council sometime this summer.
Councilman Miller and I, I guess that should be the last question unless there's another one. Councilman Miller?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dever, back to the pedestrian bridge. Are we planning to rebid that project? And what's the current concept in terms of timing for that process and for the construction?
Yeah, the intent is to put that back out for an RFQ, for bids to be, or proposals to be submitted. Right now, I'm assuming within the next 60 days, you'll see an RFQ back on, out. And we would then be entertaining proposals probably within the next, I would think, three months. I would, I would look at construction on that project possibly starting in early, late summer, early fall.
Okay, and question number two, and last question for me is, and it's one that's not on the list here, but it's of interest to me. It said the County Planning Commission is expected to issue a report within the next couple of months that's gonna be a review of possible community placemaking projects in the various neighborhoods of Cuyahoga County. And there's been, there's been discussion, which I share, of the need for the county to take the project development aspect beyond the immediate downtown neighborhood into the broader community. And my question is whether you feel that there would be a role for the Public Works Department to play in assisting the communities in designing and preparing some of their neighborhood projects?
I believe the department is well-versed in a number of things, obviously road and bridge and sewer projects. In many of these communities, we do have agreements, so we may be able to assist. They have, as the communities have dated infrastructure and whatnot, if we are going to do, move forward with improvements to that infrastructure, I would think that if this planning piece is brought into it also from our friends at County Planning, yes, I would, I'd like to be at the table there also and offer some expertise and some cost savings. And, you know, we're here to help and provide whatever we can for all of the citizens of Cuyahoga County. And actually, I'd be eager to be involved in that. I think there's been some discussions already briefly with Glenn Coyne, the Planning Director, in regards to doing some integrated planning, which involves the sewer systems and controlling of storm water that ultimately gets into our, that gets into our fresh, into the lakes and streams around here and ways to control that. And, well, I look forward to the discussions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Councilman Miller, Councilman Jones, then we'd like to move forward to the next confirmation hearing.
I just wanna go back to the additional services that we discussed being delivered to the municipalities. We had our two-year moratorium on the 20% the cities would pay towards their portion of their roadwork. And I believe that project was successful. I believe there's still need for some cities. Is there any thought around strategies around bringing something similar to that or in some form or fashion back? What do you see in terms of that particular project?
Is this the 100% program, Councilman, with that county basically? I think it needs to be, I think it's a good program, but we've put a lot of resources into it. And that's the point I was trying to make earlier is that we can leverage our dollars to get other dollars from the state or from the county or from the feds. And any of our road projects, and I know it takes a little bit more time to program them out, but if we can get 80 cents on the dollar, and I'd like to try and leverage that to do more of these projects. The 100% program is a good program, but I think we may have gone a little bit too much instead of trying to utilize the other programs we have. Like we have a 50-50 program where we'll pay up to $250,000 on any project. Or we have the, an 80-20 program where we pick up 80% of it and then the community picks up 20%. I think it's a good thing for the community to have a skin in the game also. If the county is picking up that such a large percentage of it. But the 100% is worthwhile also. I'm just questioning, should we, should it be as large as it was?
And last, can you give us a general update on the county airport? I know there were tenants that have left, like to know about the vacancy and just the master plan for the county airport as well?
Yeah, actually, we just recently received approval from the FAA to begin bidding for the new airport resurfacing project. The intent is to start, if the FAA approves, that's roughly an $8 million project. If the FAA approves, the intent is to put that in a designer's hand to do the design work on it. And then I would envision that construction over at the county airport would probably begin after the RNC in '16, after that event is over, then there would be some construction there. The master plan has been in place for some time and that hasn't changed. We're really focused on the resurfacing project now. Leasing at the facility, we are, all the buildings are being occupied. The hangars, we have leases in all those hangars. Actually, I think things are going fairly well at the county airport. They probably could be better, but I'm gonna, it'll become a focal point. And I'm gonna work with our friends in the Development Department, Nate Kelly in particular, to help kind of continue to spur growth out there.
All right, okay. If there's no apprehension, I'd like to ask for a motion to recommend Resolution R250150060 to the full council for second reading adoption under suspension of rules. Been moved and seconded. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Calling the roll on this resolution, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And President Brady?
Yes. Motion carries. Resolution will be on the council's April the 28th agenda. Clerk, would you please read the following resolution? And Mr. Dever, thank you very much. I know it's been a long process, not so much today, but this year. And we look forward to working with you. There are a lot of other issues we could have gone into, we could have done two hours on this. But we look forward to having further discussions with you about the variety of issues that we really would like to pick back up following the discussions that pretty much ended sometime late last year.
Thank you. I really appreciate your vote of confidence. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you on the issues facing the county and making it a better county for all of our other citizens here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Resolution number 20150066, a resolution confirming the county executive's appointment of Robert J. Triasi upon his taking the oath of office as Cuyahoga County Director of Law and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Mr. Triasi? We'll follow the same procedure as we did before. Make yourself comfortable and tell us why you think you should be the next law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I'm deeply honored to have made it this far in the process. I've been looking forward to this opportunity to answer your questions and hopefully make it through your confidence and support.
I've had such an interesting and rewarding career. And I'm humbled by the confidence Executive Butis has placed in me in nominating me for this position. And I will be equally honored and humbled to this council confirm my nomination. Although I grew up in the city of Ashtria, I have been a resident of the city of Cleveland and Cuyahoga County since graduating from college in 1979. My wife Monica, who teaches English as a second language at Lomond School in Shaker Heights, and I have raised our four children, starting in North Collinwood and now for the past 19 years in the Shaker Square neighborhood of Cleveland. During the past three-plus decades, I have practiced law in big and small law firms. I've led a congressional office. I was twice elected a municipal judge. I ran for Cleveland mayor and was then tapped by the man who defeated me to become the law director of a great American city. And now I have the opportunity to become the law director of a great American county. You've asked me to share a little bit about myself and my background. And sometimes I guess a picture's worth a thousand words. And one of my favorite photographs taken nearly, almost exactly 33 years ago at my law school graduation at Case Western Reserve Law School was one of my father, me and my father, with him smiling with pride, congratulating by softly patting me on my chest. The photo is a reminder to me so much of who I am and the things I value. So I still take a couple hundred words in talking about the photo. But a little family history might provide some context and go a long way to help me explain myself to you. My grandparents came to the United States at the beginning of the last century. And my father and his four siblings were born in Ashtria. But when my father was six years old, my grandparents moved the family back to the family farm in Italy. And tried to, there they tried to eke out their, do their best to eke out a living in post-World War I Italy. Despite their efforts, my grandparents realized in the mid-1920s that they had made a big mistake in going back to Italy. And they wanted to return to a life in America. However, during their absence, the US immigration laws had changed for Southern Europeans and they were prevented from returning to the United States. My 15-year-old father and his 16-year-old brother were American citizens, however. And the thought was that if they returned to America, they, as US citizens, could apply to have their parents and their younger siblings rejoin them in the United States. The two young teenagers set off alone across the Atlantic by boat into New York Harbor and then by train to Ashtria, where they were taken in by old friends of the family. Then they learned that you had to be at least 21 years old to apply to have your family reunited. And to make matters even more challenging, all of this was happening on the eve of the Great Depression. During this difficult time, however, the two boys were welcomed into the guiding hands of the Ashtria community. They had food and shelter and the community helped them find work even in the midst of the depression. And they began to support. And they began to support themselves. And after several years passed, the two boys were able to bring everyone but my aunt, who had married in Italy, back to the United States, where the entire family lived out their lives in the fulfillment that this country had to offer. My father said that the only thing he regretted about all this was it prevented him from getting an education. I think his formal education ended with the sixth grade. But he was a lifelong student of history, geography, and world affairs. Our dinner table was filled with lively discussions about the local, national, and world events of our time. My father was an engaged citizen. He went to community and school meetings. He helped local candidates for public office. He voted religiously, and above all, he loyally and without reservation served this country in the Pacific for four years during World War II. The man in the photo, patting me on the chest for my accomplishment, worked hard every day for over 30 years as a clerk for the railroad, married the pretty girl who lived next door to his sister, my aunt, who remained in Italy. And my mom, after she came to the United States, became a beloved MRDD teacher in Ashtria Bula County. They provided the boy in the graduation photo a loving and supportive home, and even with its economic challenges, in a loving and supportive community. They found a way to send him to Cornell University, where he received an education his father could only remotely have dreamed possible. And the boy found his way to Severance Hall that day in the photo with a law degree firmly clutched in his hand. I love that photo. Because of the wonderful sense of achievement that was expressed in the photo belonged equally to both me and my dad. So what do I value? I value all that went into this favorite photo. I value family and the strength and support of community. I value education and the value of hard work. I value courage and loyalty. I value citizenship. And I believe strongly in the value, in the proposition that any child who had the same level of love and support I was born into could achieve as much, if not more, than I have these past 33 years. I want to be part of this administration and this council's effort to help our county provide support and opportunities effectively and equitably to all its citizens. And I believe my values and experiences have prepared me for this challenge. Experience from my early years as a litigator with the law firm of Gardner, McGinty &amp; Stanton, where I learned and sharpened the skills and tools of my craft. Experience from my two years as a congressional district director, managing the district office, providing constituent service, and offering policy advice. Experience from my decade as a municipal judge, where I saw the challenges of fairness and equity and the value of support systems and employment opportunities. I was proud to help create the Greater Cleveland Drug Court, the Cleveland Mental Health Court, the dedicated domestic violence docket. And being held next week is the 19th Annual Cleveland Mock Trial Competition, which I initiated in collaboration with the court and the Cleveland Metropolitan School District and the Cleveland Metropolitan Bar Association. Then, after my time on the bench, there was my experience for nearly six years as Cleveland Law Director, where I managed a large and accomplished staff and where I learned the value of financial stewardship and inclusion and community and economic development. There I was responsible for negotiations with 26 unions and 33 bargaining units over two contract cycles. We defended the city in a multitude of legal actions and aggressively prosecuted several of our own. We stood up for our community and vigorously fought the assault on our home rule authority. I was proud to have been appointed by the council president as vice chair of the Charter Review Commission and to work hard to fight the ramifications of the subprime and foreclosure crisis. And then after my time with the city, there's experience from the three years at the law firm of Calphe Halter in Griswold, where I was reminded daily of the opportunity and power excellent and dedicated lawyers have in helping others achieve positive results and effect positive change for the people we represent. I will consider it an honor to become what is essentially the managing partner of what I have already found to be a very fine law firm here at the county. I want to personally thank my predecessor, Majid McClu, for his leadership in building our law department almost from scratch in what was really a very short time. I have inherited a talented and dedicated team of lawyers, paralegals, and staff who I have already found to work with the highest degree of collaboration, collegiality, and professionalism. I'm also appreciative of the time Majid spent with me doing his best to pass along all the information and advice possible to help my transition into this role. I'm grateful for his advice and support, and I recognize the fact that he has set a pretty high bar for this position. But I can assure you that if I'm not up to the challenge, it won't be for the lack of effort. I also want to assure you that I fully recognize that we are council's lawyers as well as the administration's. I take that obligation seriously. In the nearly six years I served in a similar role in Cleveland, I believe we successfully navigated the natural and nuanced council-administration divide, and we provided sound counsel to both branches. I know that experience will be the proof, and I trust that if we are ever falling short of our duties and responsibilities in this regard, you will immediately call me on it. I appreciate the collaborative relationship that has clearly developed between the law department and your staff. I look forward to building on that. I also look forward to lending support to my colleagues in the law department. I suppose in a way, in the spirit of playoff basketball, I'm part general manager, part coach, part point guard, a point guard who knows the value of both offense and defense, but mostly one who relishes the art of the assist. Whether it be contracts, economic development, legislation, litigation, risk management, labor employment, public records, home rule, or whatever the legal subject, our entire team will be prepared to offer the county through its administration and council, premier legal council with the highest degree of professionalism. I want you to know that I do meet the charter qualifications for this position. I want you to also know, however, that I would very much like to have the opportunity to prove to you that I have the qualities necessary for this position. The qualities of leadership and insight and diligence, the qualities of collaboration and courage and judgment, and the qualities of honesty, ethics, and professionalism. I hope I meet your expectations and earn your trust. Mr. President, I'm prepared to answer the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Triasi. You certainly have a lot of experience to recommend you for the position. If you're confirmed, and as law director, you will be representing the county in matters with previous clients from your previous practice. What steps will you take to ensure that there are no conflicts of interest?
Well, I'm quite familiar, one of the things I always appreciated with the experience at Calphe was how seriously the conflict issue needs to be. I have a, typically, I mean, there's two avenues in order for me to separate any potential conflict. Within the department itself, there's the possibility of building walls to make sure that I have, with the accomplished staff, to make sure that I have no role whatsoever if a conflict of interest should emerge. We also have the advantage, the added tool of sharing duties with the county prosecutor's office. We have an agreement with them. If matters arise where I have any potential conflict and for whatever reason, building a wall within our office is not sufficient, also have the opportunity to engage the county prosecutor's office to ensure that that wall is respected and that no conflict would exist. I have, through my 33 years, I've come to appreciate the importance and the significance of that rule, and I intend to fully abide by it.
Thank you. Questions by the committee? Councilwoman Brown, then Councilman Jones?
Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
And thank you for sharing that story. One of the things that is important to me, and we had a meeting earlier this week, and so I'm curious as to where you see opportunities for regional collaboration with municipalities and subdivisions through the law department.
Well, the law department, of course, supports, in representing the council and administration, we support all of those initiatives. And the client has clearly directed that this is an important endeavor. You know, how we relate to municipalities, how services are shared. Much of it is, you know, through contract. Obviously, we in the law department are the ones that would be engaged in all of that. It's something that the law department would fully support. I'm not sure if your question pertains to legal services at all, but in terms of our support of the policy of the county to look for those opportunities, they will have the full support of the law department.
Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
How do you plan to balance the law department's role in being the legal advisor to both council and the executive with the understanding that each branch of government may have different or varying policy priorities?
I recognize that clearly, Councilman, that divide. I had experience at the city of Cleveland doing that. I believe that it's important that we constantly remind ourselves of that obligation. But I think that it's a matter of building the relationship, having open lines of communication, and a complete understanding that that is our obligation under the charter. We are, the law department is a creation of the charter, and we are directly guided by that. And the important quality is just maintaining the lines of communication. I have to say again that working with the council staff has just been, in the short time during my interim status, has been rewarding. I believe that those lines of communication have been solid. I look forward, over the course, you know, should, you know, be confirmed, keeping those lines of communication, you know, completely open, that we listen, that we engage in the dialogue, and that we're very supportive of this body. It is, obviously, it's, you know, it's beyond our responsibility. It's, you know, in order for us to advance the overall mission of the county, it's a necessary relationship, lawyer-client relationship. I look forward to building on that.
What do you see, if I may? What is your vision for the future of the risk management division?
Well, that's, yeah, I was very pleased to see that the law department has created a distinct division of risk management. It's not only, I mean, with regard to, part of what you do every time there's a claim filed in addition to resolving, you know, the dispute. Hopefully, in every claim, there's some seeds of understanding of what, you know, there are things that you could do to prevent this happening again. You take care of whatever happened, but then hopefully, as a result of that, you begin to identify those things, that if you change policies, if you pay attention to, you know, these circumstances, you change some processes, you identify the problem, you can prevent that from happening again. I'm glad to see that we have this. And what I hope is that, in addition to simply gaining that insight from the claim itself, I mean, something necessarily went off track, generated a claim, and so, you know, you want to take advantage of that, but we need to put ourselves in a position to, you do that same analysis, provide that same counsel, even if there's not a claim. Most of us lawyers, and my experience has always been, I mean, when we're confronted with litigation, is, the thought crosses your mind, is if they had only come to us sooner, you know, had they only sought our advice on the front end, we could have provided some counsel to prevent, you know, certain negative situations to occur. So real risk management is being able to use the talent that exists in the law department, the legal skills that we have, to engage in a level of dialogue and communication, the back and forth as ideas are floated, contracts are entered into, projects are developed in hopes that we're able to issue SPOT and help decision-makers identify those things that you can do on the front end, you know, to reduce your risk, you know, down the road. And it really goes to the heart of, you know, the level of communication and dialogue I'm talking about, and engagement. It's, we are not a department that you come to only after something has gone awry. I mean, engaging us at all levels of, you know, the decision-making process would probably go a long way in risk management.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Triasi, congratulations on your recommendation for appointment. And I really appreciate your willingness to bring the vast and varied experience that you have to the benefit of Cuyahoga County. As I'm sure you're aware, there is a memorandum of understanding between the county, the executive, and the prosecutor regarding the different duties of the two offices. And my question is whether, from a legal standpoint, that you feel that this memorandum of understanding is a proper solution to defining the roles between the two offices? Or do you think that there are inherent conflicts in the way that the charter language is written that really needs to be clarified through a charter amendment?
Well, based on everything I've seen to this point, and the relationship between the two offices, the memorandum is working perfectly fine. Again, in my short time here, the relationship with the prosecutor's office has been excellent. Issues have come up. You know, our team and the legal team in the prosecutor's office engage with each other. There's considerable dialogue back and forth. It is a very positive relationship, and as far as I can tell, that memorandum is working well. Obviously, that the circumstances that gave rise to requiring a memorandum suggest that there was different interpretations of the charter. Clarity is always beneficial for the long term. The working relationship we have now, a decade, two decades from now, who knows what might develop? By all indications, the relationship is working well. Duties have, the jobs are getting done, and the offices demonstrate a high degree of collegiality and collaboration. But I am mindful that there was a dispute, took legal opinions as a result of varied interpretations of the charter. Councilman, that may be a discussion, but from where I sit and knowing the work that needs to be done and the partners that we have there in the prosecutor's office, I, you know, I'm confident that we will work well through the memorandum that's in place.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Triasi, I have a generally favorable opinion about the memorandum as well. But one thing that concerned me is that that after the memorandum occurred, that the size of both offices went up. You know, there was some hope that a clear delineation of roles would eliminate some duplication and that there could be some cost savings, which did not, in fact, occur. The question I have is whether you feel that the law department as currently constituted is fully built out? Or are there areas where you feel that additional staff might be? be required in the relatively near future?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. I don't know yet. Here's, here's what I have, in the short amount of time during the interim status, it's clear to me, our lawyers here are very, very busy. The, you know, the workload, the type of, of, of legal work that's, that occurs here is no different than the, the type of work that we had, that I experienced in Cleveland. Cleveland had a far larger, larger staff. I, always concerned, when you, when you look at, the very first thing I will need to do, and then I'd be in a position to be better prepared to answer your question, is in, recognize the, the volume and the complexity of what we do, you know, are, but those two qualities, are we appropriately staffed? It's not just about quantity of work, and I don't, you know, as I, as I look at the work that we do, making sure that we're, we're keeping current, that nothing is delayed, you know, making sure that we're moving our contracts and our litigation is moving, you know, just doing the volume of work is one component. I am keenly interested in the quality of our work. You know, the more that you put on somebody's plate, the harder, the deadlines, the faster things move. Would always be a concern of mine is, are we, are we doing our work? Have we had the time to, you know, to, you know, do our work, you know, at the highest possible level? It seems to me, again, in a very brief time, that the, we operate at extremely high quality. I haven't seen any, anything to suggest otherwise. I am also, you know, mindful of the budgetary concerns. It's not my intention to just grow a department. In fact, during my, my time in Cleveland, I had, because of budgetary, you know, during the, those difficult times, I had to go through staff contraction. Every year, I lost people, and that, the experience of then trying to, to figure out how we continue to do our work at a high level with fewer people was an enormous, an enormous challenge. So, I, I'm mindful of the, on the one, the, the one value of doing things cost-effectively, and it's always the, a, a prime consideration. But I have a fiduciary responsibility to all of you to make sure that the quality of our work is, is at the highest level, and it's a fine line. I will, I will monitor it, I will, will be engaged, I'm sure, in any discussion. Again, it's not my intention to, to, to grow for, for growth's sake. It'll be focused on the, what we're asked to do, the volume of work, and the quality of work that you deserve.
Thank you. Councilman Greenspan.
All right, thank you. Some of my colleagues hit some of the points that I was going to talk about, and I think what you're hearing a little bit is, and I'll just be blunt, and, because I, I am, the, but let me say this, I have, you, you, the Law Department has some, some very fine attorneys, I will say that. But the charter is adequate as a starting point, it's flawed in a lot of areas, we have 15 charter amendments or so, the Charter Review Commission brought forward, an independent body. One of the big flaws, I think, in the charter is the fact that you have two bosses. You report to the council president, and you report to the executive, and there's an inherent challenge in that, in the sense that, as was the question posed to you earlier, there may be conflicting policy initiatives, and the challenge is being able to differentiate your two clients effectively, and being able to align staff to address the issues. It's a challenge. We saw it in the last administration. One of the big fallacies that I saw in the last, was, was that the law director was too engaged in policy, and stating policy opinion versus legal opinion, and it's my expectation that the Law Department moving forward will not engage in that activity. You know, my, my experience in business with lawyers is they make great lawyers and horrible business people. You know, let the business people make the business decisions, and you make the legal decisions. Well, in this environment, I would encourage you to make the legal decisions, let the policy, whether it be an executive policy or council policy, the policymakers make those decisions. I was not a fan of the MOU, for the, a lot of the purposes we're hearing today. The intent was, is that a lot of the civil side of the prosecutor's business was to come to the county, which it did, and the Law Department grew its, its, in its scope to handle the responsibilities, but we didn't see the reductions that we were anticipating. So, since the two initial parties to the agreement, or the, the negotiators, previous former county prosecutor and the previous county law director are no longer here, you've got a letter of recommendation from Mr. McGinnity, so I believe that there's a strong relationship between the two of you, but is there an expectation to sit down between the two of you, is it your expectation, and review the MOU to determine, now that you've, it's been in place for two-plus years, is it really working as intended?
Absolutely, Councilman. I, again, you're right. I mean, I've inherited this, this MOU, I've given you some indication of just the snapshot view out of the gate here, and during my interim status. I do have a, although we, we did run each, against each other for county prosecutor, we do have a good, good working relationship. I, we, I, I fully expect that he and I, he's invited me to, to sit down and talk. I thought I would wait until counsel had its, had its say in my, my nomination before I engaged in that, but we have a, we'll have strong dialogue. Clearly, the relationship is what we're going to be talking about, and, you know, it, but I do want to say that, that thus far, it, it seems to me, I have not heard anything, at least from my team in the Law Department, that there had been issues that I need to, you know, that it's not working. But I, but I don't disagree with, obviously, it's, it's open to a fresh set of eyes.
Right, and I'm not implying that there is, because I have no knowledge, but just, like you said, fresh eyes between you and Prosecutor McGinnity to review it, see what's working, what's not, make some modifications to it. But I guess the last question, because a lot of my colleagues asked the questions I was planning on asking, but, you know, do you recognize the fact, as law director, as the charter is written, that you do also report to the coun, I'll say the council president, as the speaker on behalf of county?
Absolutely. I, I had the, the advantage in the, in learning the role of law director in the city of Cleveland, having the mayor, having been the former counsel president. He understood completely what you're, what you've identified here, and he helped me learn to navigate that. I, I, and it's something that, that, you know, I believe I was successful at. I mean, you're, you're right, there's challenges, I'm sure that there were moments there that, that, you know, perhaps, you know, almost impossible to, to bridge that divide, but I, I was aware of it then, I was schooled in it, I was trained in it, I bring that background here, and I assure you that I understand the, the, the challenge. I believe I'm up to it, and I fully expect to be called on it if, if I'm failing to meet that challenge, it's important to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The county has conducted a disparity study, we have, our procurement office will, as the legislation moves to committee, will, in time, work on implementing the community benefits program, and our county executive has also spoken on some of his inclusion efforts in his state of the county address. Share with us your experience, your thoughts and philosophies on the diversity and the inclusion goals and, and efforts that you've experienced in your, in your past career, and what you see here at county.
Well, I, Councilman, I, I fully, I have, I believe fundamentally and completely in the power of diversity. I have seen it, I mean, I, you know, I, I live in a diverse community, I've sent my children to diverse schools, I worship in a diverse parish, I have worked in diverse environments, from the court, to, you know, the city of Cleveland, I have seen the power of diversity in, on, in, in all its, in all its aspects, it's something I fundamentally believe in, and that everything, that, the things that we can do as we focus on our community and, and employment, and all the positive things that we want to offer our, you know, our residents, that, that everybody benefits from it, that it is just not one group or another group, that this is a, a, a shared benefit, is something I fundamentally believe in, and to think through, you know, the legal obstacles and the challenges, and all of those, 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 you know, obstacles out there that prevent these efforts from coming to full fruition, I mean, I've, I've worked at it with the city, it's something I'm, I'm experienced at, it's, but it is something that, that I believe in, and should it be the policy of this county and this administration, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be aligned with that, that thinking, and should the, that be the policy, you can expect from me, full attention, and everything that I can do to help think through ways of, of making sure that, you know, the community benefits, or whatever the, the program or effort might be, that your, that your, your policy directive is achieved.
Mr. Trazee, obviously, the county government has lots of challenges, and you'll be, you know, very busy and engaged in all manner of, of activities, the diversity of things that would come in front of us is pretty amazing. We have a, a unique challenge in the efforts to try to determine the future of the governing status of East Cleveland, and we have, have asked, as you know, of course, for some direction from the Law Department. We're hearing lots of opinions from people in the state government and others, and very tuned in, I think, trying to be to what's going on, on the ground, so to speak, in the, in the East Cleveland and adjacent community. But we want to be, and you as our potential legal counsel, want, we want to be as prepared as we possibly can about what the county's options may be. We're not, I'm not trying to lead this process in a particular direction, I'm trying to understand it as best as I can, and help disseminate that information to the other members of, of council, and in the event that we find ourselves faced with having to make some decisions sooner rather than later. Could you give us your opinion on what it is we're facing?
Well, the, the, Mr. President, the, obviously, the, the, you know, the challenge here is to be able to predict how things unfold, I mean, any number of scenarios, you know, would develop, and, and we have already begun at your, when, when you approached us, begun a lively dialogue over all those things, all of the different things that might trigger the counties being, being asked, or trigger a potential role for the, for the county. Clearly, the county under its charter has some abilities, other, other plans or other ideas, I mean, given our authority to exercise municipal powers, you know, in, in the, you know, through the, through the charter, we may have some things available to us that people may ask us to perform, and, and we will, we will provide you with what that might look like, what that would entail. Much would, else depends on the will of the, the people of East Cleveland, on the direction that they want to take. Much will depend, if there's any merger discussions, if that's the role, or, or a, a response that needs to occur, whether the state takes any act. There, there, each triggering mechanism may, may suggest a different role for the county. We will provide you, as best we can, the playbook, that if this happens, here's, here's the, here's how that process plays out, here are the decision points within that process, here are the, the pieces that we may, as, we as a county may be asked to, to weigh in and participate, how we can be helpful, or if, if that's, if that's a desire the policymakers want to, want to engage in. But there, it's a, it is, it has been a lively discussion to this point because of the uncertainty of knowing what, what's next, but we, we will, we've already begun that process and that dialogue, and that thinking out of the box a little bit as to what, what opportunities or, or challenges might, might be ahead for the county.
I know that you're going to have a lot on your, on your plate, but I want to make sure that this is at the top of your list, as it's at the top of our request, so that we don't get caught flat-footed, and that we have as much information as we possibly can, as soon as we possibly can, in order to be able to be prepared and qualified to help give the county direction.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Germana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. You know, under the municipal setup, the Law Department and Law Director more or less gives guidance on opinions for what we have in, in county government, is the inspector general. So, not only are, are you kind of sharing responsibilities with the prosecutor, I'd just like to hear what your feeling is towards sharing that responsibility with the inspector general, and, and how you think this all fits together.
Well, it, it, you know, it's a collaborative relationship, that, you're, you're right, Councilman, that, you know, without a, an office of inspector general, many of those responsibilities would fall, you know, upon the Law Department. It is something that I engage, you know, that I had to do with, in the city of Cleveland, it's, obviously, the, the importance of the, of the work cannot be, cannot be overstated. Anything, there are instances where the, if, if matters that, that come before the inspector general that maybe don't rise to their level of, of action, but not, I fully expect would get referred to us to see whether or not there's anything further that could be done from a legal analysis. I, I, this is not a, I don't, while there is a wall around the office, it is, you know, once they are completed doing their, their, their responsibility, there may be other things that, that we should look at. I'm, I'm experienced at it, I, if there are things, any way that I can be helpful, respecting the, you know, the, the nature and the independence of the office, but, you know, I, I'm perfectly willing, ready, willing, and able to provide the appropriate assistance, you know, when called upon. It, it provides an important function, I respect it. I'm not challenged by, by somebody else doing a role that, that might otherwise have come to me. It, it's, it's important, it's an important position, important office, they do, they do significant, important work, and they're to support it.
Any other questions for Mr. Trazee?
Hearing none. Do I have a motion to forward the resolution R. 2015-0066 to the full council for second reading adoption under suspension of rules?
No.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If none, clerk, would you please give us a roll call vote?
Calling the roll, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Council President Brady?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Which is adopted. Well, congratulations for making it to this point, and we'll look forward to seeing you next week on Tuesday.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate this. Thank you.
Anxious to complete the, to help build this new administration and get it in place. So, thank you for your time, and particularly, I want to thank the members of council who were able to find the time to be down here this afternoon for their time. Are there any miscellaneous? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to, any public comment unrelated to the agenda?
No, Mr. President.
All right. I'll move to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This committee's adjourned. See you, Mr. Triasi.